However, it would send out a clear message that LA is joining other cities in supporting change, and so far, LA would be the biggest city to join that effort. Outside City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
We've reported for years about the lack of green space in Los Angeles, but what if you could take excess space like unused loading zones on city streets and turn them into miniature parks? That's the idea behind parklets, and this month, the cities first are opening up with a lot of fanfare. Gil Reyes reports from Highland Park.
They brought out the band and even baked a cake to celebrate LA's first parklet on York Boulevard near Avenue 50.
It shows that Highland Park and the merchants and the residents of Highland Park in northeast LA are ahead of the curve in promoting more pedestrian access for our people, saying that we want more bike lanes, encouraging living streets where neighborhoods come together, get to know one another.
It's a simple idea: Take excess space, in this case, a six-by-20-foot no-parking zone, and turn it into a public porch where everyone's invited. Add seating, drought-resistant plants, and safety wire to separate traffic. On a crowded day, it looks like this: A gathering place for the neighborhood.
It's great when these exist in front of restaurants as they do in San Francisco and in New York, but we actually want it to be the hub for the entire neighborhood. So let's put it in front of the hardware store, and the auto parts store, and the music store, places where anyone and everyone can feel comfortable gathering.
To give it that neighborhood feel, the parklet's art references the community. This tape measure, for example, salutes the local mom-and-pop hardware store, while this luchador mask is an homage to the fun, artsy spirit of this mostly Latino neighborhood, which hosts a second Saturday art fair every month. The mosaic designed by Glass Studio owner Kathy Milligan.
I went to different businesses and different people that were part of the meetings and either had them come by and make something, or I acquired pictures.
This is the first, but certainly not the last of the parklets. Three more parklets are set to open in the month of February: Two in downtown Los Angeles, one in the community of El Sereno.
What we wanted to show is how cheap this is, how easy, how it builds community, so that we have these throughout the city.
In Highland Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Parklets are made possible by grants from community partners like the Downtown Neighborhood Council, the Highland Park Chamber of Commerce, and Barrio Action Youth and Family Center. And we'll have a story on the two new downtown parklets in the next episode of LA this week. A road that takes Angelinos and tourists up close to one of the most famous signs in the world was recently reopened. Cindy San Luis takes us to Hollywood with more.
Councilmember Tom Labonge and the City of LA's Bureau of Engineering celebrated the reopening of Mount Lee Drive in Hollywood with an eye view of the Hollywood sign after an extensive repaving project.
This road was the worst road in the city, and yet our emergency services from police and fire, and our daily operations of our ITA specialists, those who help the city communicate, had trouble traversing.
The $824,000 effort ensures the access road is navigable for first responders and the city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA. The summit of Mount Lee Drive leads here to the Critical Communications Facility for the City of Los Angeles. It supports the radio systems of the LAPD and Fire Department.
ITA maintains staff up here on a 24-by-7 basis. This is how Critical decided.
Street repairs necessitated by erosion restored lateral support of the street and helped maintain proper drainage.
I really want to thank Bureau of Engineering for doing such a fantastic job of getting it below budget, on time, getting guardrails up, handrails up, all the potholes done. They did seven hotspots.
There was a year's timeframe in the project, but we got done in like four months.
We know how important this road, this road is for the, the community and the City of Los Angeles.
And now, Mount Lee Drive is again accessible for city workers, Angelinos, and tourists to use. From Hollywood, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
We should mention that while Mount Lee can be hiked, the immediate area where the Hollywood sign is located is close to the public since the area is a high-risk fire zone. Much-needed sidewalk repairs are taking place in the San Fernando Valley. Gil Reyes reports on a $1 million plan to fix some of the worst sidewalks in the city.
The Bureau of Street Services goes to work on what it calls "the 50 Worst Sidewalks in Council District 3," based on citizens' complaints.
This is sidewalk reconstruction, not just sidewalk repair. We are replacing the existing sidewalk with new sidewalks.
The reconstruction planned for parts of Tarzana, Woodland Hills, Canoga Park, Reseda, and Winnetka. We're at Oso Avenue and Hart Street in Winnetka, where the sidewalk used to look like this. Today, it looks like this. The repairs, courtesy of $1 million from the Office of Council District 3.
Make no mistake about it, we will use this money wisely. I have one of my best supervisors right there, Joe Gallegos, and if he doesn't do a good job, and he doesn't, if he doesn't do a good job, he'll be, he'll be, we will transfer him to our yard in Siberia.
Ah, you don't want to go to Siberia.
City officials say the $1 million is made up of savings from Council District 3's office account, also redevelopment money reserved for the area. Combined with tree trimming and other street improvements, city officials hope to reduce liability claims from tripping, eliminate blight, and increase public safety in this area. In Winnetka, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
City officials have just unveiled a new traffic light at a dangerous intersection near downtown, the site of dozens of traffic accidents. As Yana Kay tells us, children from a nearby school are among those who will benefit most from this new signal. With the flip of a switch, Councilmember Ed Reyes officially gives the green light for a new traffic signal in the Westlake area near downtown LA at Bonnie Bray Street and Olympic Boulevard. Reyes petitioned the Los Angeles Department of Transportation for the new light after a deadly hit-and-run accident at this intersection that killed 11-month-old Judith Ascencio in 2009.
When you drive through the areas of Westlake, Pico Union, understand you're driving through our neighborhoods. Understand you're putting our children's life at risk if you don't pay attention to the traffic signals.
Councilmember Reyes was joined by kids from the nearby Camino Nuevo Charter School, the Los Angeles Police and Transportation Departments, to unveil the new traffic light. Officials say the intersection now boasts several features to improve public safety in this area.
People who are visually impaired can still use the signal safely, and they can feel the vibrating signal and the plate to cross the street.
Senior transportation engineer at the Department of Transportation, Verrez Genoan, also said the lines of the painted crosswalk are wider and therefore help make pedestrians much more visible to motorists. And instead of having cars stop at the crosswalk, they now have to stop five feet behind it.
So this is just not a light. It's literally a beacon of safety.
Police officials say that since 2000, there have been a total of 54 traffic accidents at this intersection, but they hope to reduce that number with the new light.
Thank you to the area's office. We have something that the community needs.
A new traffic light that officials hope will save lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week. Will save lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week. The hit-and-run driver was arrested and charged with drunken vehicular manslaughter. A new monument now greets visitors to Panorama City's LAPD Valley Traffic Division. It honors traffic cops who died while working to make LA more traffic safe. Anna Marcos takes us to the unveiling.
Even LA firefighters came to pay tribute as the LAPD's Valley Traffic Division in Panorama City unveiled the special memorial monument.
Three, two, one. The unveiling is now. There it is. Oh, wow, there it is.
This end-of-watch monument honors the seven Valley Traffic Officers who died in the last 40 years while keeping LA's streets and motorists safe. Cara Chillo, Mezerly, Schmidt, Evans, Dean, Marshall, and Verna. Many of the families were on hand to remember.
Actually, I wish my, my daughter would have gotten to know my father.
They were officers who often dealt with accidents like the one Captain Jeff Burt had his first day on the job. A teen driver had overturned his car, killing himself and two others.
It looked like the corner of Armageddon. But then I saw my cops. They brought calm to calamity, restoring order.
Anyone who walks into the LAPD's Valley Traffic Division will see this memorial 20 feet up in the air with the names of the fallen traffic officers on it. As you can see right now, there is scaffolding for people to see it, but soon, it will be hanging midair.
This is really a celebration of the lives of all those who've risked ultimately and given that ultimate sacrifice.
Chief Charlie Beck remembered not only the fallen traffic cops, but all LAPD officers who have died on his watch.
Since I've been a Los Angeles police officer, which is just over 36 years, we've lost 53. And when we do a memorial every year, I remember every one of those.
They died on LA streets, but here, on this wall, their memories now find a resting place forever. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The memorial created by artist Tim Lambros took 10 months to make. Chief Charlie Beck was given a small replica to hang in his office. Last year, a team of thieves who preyed on the elderly in the valley were caught and property recovered. The Los Angeles Police Department is now searching for the owners of the stolen property and need your help. Cindy San Luis has more.
Beginning in January of 2012, a series of distraction burglaries plagued elderly victims in the San Fernando Valley and the City of Glendora.
The typical scenario is the suspects would use a ruse, always target elderly victims, and either state they were from Department of Water and Power or were conducting some sort of construction or working on their neighbor's wall to get the person in the home into the backyard.
While we call them suspects, they truly are predators. They focused their crimes on not only the elderly, but the disabled.
Police say these individuals would carry a clipboard or measuring tape to look more official, and spend 20 to 30 minutes with the victim in the backyard, while one or two other people would then enter and ransack the house.
In May of last year, a vigilant member of the community gave our West Valley Area detectives the first break on the case by providing us with a partial license plate. This important tip led to arrests that were made in June of 2012.
As a result of those arrests, a lot of property, from jewelry to silverware, was recovered from the suspects.
We want to make sure that that property, which has both monetary and sentimental value, is returned to the victims of those crimes.
All three defendants accepted a deal in court. Ann Carter got two years in state prison, Matthew Ristic got four.
Alex Davis was out on bail. He took a deal for eight years and was supposed to turn himself in on January 22nd. That did not happen.
Police say the community can help protect their elderly neighbors from criminals like these.
Do what they can to educate them about this, to make sure that they ask for and demand identification when people come and represent that they're affiliated with government agencies or even with private contracting companies.
I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week. If you think your property may be among those recovered, you can view photos of the items by going to lapdonline.org/valebureau. There you can do a search of keywords like the suspect's names, and that will take you to information on the case and a link of the photos of the recovered items. Turning the Tables on the LEDWP: How You Can Sell the Utility Power. And the Port of Los Angeles: The Subject of a Children's Book. Also giving your input on the city's next budget plan. These stories and more in City Beat. The LA Department of Water and Power is allowing you to turn the tables on them. Instead of purchasing power from the LEDWP, you can now sell solar power to the LEDWP. The LEDWP and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners have approved a program in which customers, solar companies, and other third parties would be allowed to develop solar or other eligible renewable energy projects within LEDWP's service territory, and to sell that power to LEDWP at a set price for distribution on the city's power grid. For more information about the Solar Fit Program, which stands for Feed-In Tariff, go to ledwp.com/fit. Over the next few weeks, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, or LASSA, which oversaw the recent LA County Homeless Count, will begin compiling the raw data gathered by all the participating cities to create a plan that will help reduce the region's homeless population and provide a better safety net for those who remain on the streets. Several cities throughout the county participated in the count, including the Sunland-Tahunga Community in Councilman Richard Alorcon's district. LASSA will be releasing an executive summary and full report of the 2013 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count later this year, likely around June. If you didn't have a chance to attend the recent Community Budget Day at City Hall, you can still weigh in on the city's budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 by going online. The Los Angeles Budget Challenge was released on February 1st and distributed to all 95 neighborhood councils around the city, but Mayor Antonio Villarreal also wants your input. All you have to do is go to la.budgetchallenge.org by March 4th. The mayor has said this is a chance to help make the city work for you to create a spending plan that truly reflects the needs of our city. You're never too young to learn about the environment. The Port of Los Angeles is the focus of a new children's book titled "A Cleaner Port: A Brighter Future: The Greening of the Port of Los Angeles." The book, written by Robyn C. Friend and Judith Love Cohen, is the sixth in a series of environmental children's books. The authors explain how the Port of Los Angeles is using cleaner, greener ways to move cargo. In this week's list of things to do, a beginner's hike at Griffith Park ushering in Chinese New Year, the Year of the Snake, and a discussion that delves into what can be learned from President Obama's 2012 reelection. If you missed the last Griffith Park hike led by Ranger Ernie Abara, there is another one coming up on Saturday, February 16th. This one is a three-mile beginner hike to Trails Cafe, meet at the Griffith Observatory parking lot next to the restrooms at 8:00 AM. The Observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Avenue. Be sure to bring cash if you want to buy a snack. You'll find more details by going to facebook.com/rangerernie. Bye-bye, Year of the Dragon. The Year of the Snake is moving in, as the lunar calendar ushers in a new year. And on Saturday and Sunday, February 16th and 17th, LA's Chinatown will be throwing a big party, complete with its annual Golden Dragon Parade, arts and crafts for kids, and much more. Saturday's festivities will run from noon to 8:00 PM and Sunday's from noon to 5:00 PM. It all takes place at the Central and West Plazas, located at 943 to 951 North Broadway in Chinatown. More info can be found by going to facebook.com/LosAngelesChinatown. The California African-American Museum's History Council is set to host its third installment of Conversations at CAM's three-part series entitled "Beyond 2012: Be the Change." The discussion will take place Saturday, February 16th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM. Beyond 2012: Be the Change will detail lessons learned from the 2012 presidential election, the role of African-American citizens, and strategies for the future as the historic reelection of President Obama is analyzed. The California African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive at Exposition Park. You can find out more by going to caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. High school kids pit their robots against each other in a friendly test of wills and ingenuity. Gil Reyes reports from the battle of the bots.
Oh, almost scored that bonus piece.
The goal for these student-made robots: To scoop up as many bean bags as possible before placing those bags onto the truck. And it's all done by remote control.
It's very satisfying when you score a goal, and you just feel happy that you participated.
They got the gold in there, now they gotta keep it there.
No points awarded if bean bags fall. Those are the rules at the Vex Robotics Sack Attack Tournament.
This is the very first event, in fact, to be hosted at Pierce College, and I'm really glad that the Pierce Robotics Club had the opportunity to do it this year.
Middle and high school students built the robots from scratch. They were put to the test after weeks, sometimes months, of tinkering.
It's a lot of fun, and you get to learn how to be creative and work with other people towards a common goal.
Parents also took part.
We participated in all the meetings. We did all the fundraising for their, for their parts for their robot. We carpooled together, so the whole team and the parents worked together to support the kids.
It's very important for children to understand that their parents are there for them, irregardless of whether they are successful or whether they are not successful. As long as they try, as long as they put forth their best effort, then they can all be winners.
They might even be future scientists, engineers, and inventors if that's their true passion. While getting down to the nuts and bolts, these students may have discovered something about themselves: What makes them tick? In Woodland Hills, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Congratulations go out to Reseda High School, which received the most awards. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
이 로스앤젤레스 대도시의 유권자 여러분들을 돕기 위해 배경이나 직업에 관계없이 자원봉사의 임하고 있는 남녀들이 있습니다. 그들은 바로 투표소 요원들입니다. 그들은 선거 당일 유권자들을 위해 투표지를 배포하고 질문에 답하며 투표소를 개장하고 폐장합니다. 그들은 돈 구해서가 아니라 다른 사람을 돕는 마음으로 이러한 일을 마다하지 않습니다. 미국 사회의 중추적 분으로서 매우 훌륭한 일을 수행할 수 있는 이러한 투표소 요원일에 여러분도 참여하십시오.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sargent, please call the members and have them report to the council chambers. Please call the members, have them report to the council chambers. I do want to thank Mr. Garcetti, Weezer, Labaj, Parks, Reyes, and Zine for being here early. Sargent, please call the members and let me know when they will arrive. Mr. Buscaino has arrived. Good morning. It is Friday, February 15th. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. We're going to start today off with a presentation led by Councilmember Ed Reyes. I direct your attention to the rear of the chambers. All right, it's one more time for the Wong-Tai-Sin Lion Dance Team for their wonderful performance. Mr. Reyes, I think we should give a special round of applause for the young gentleman that played the tail. So let's give the guys that were the tail. Because they must have strong backs.
Kind of like defensive backs, right?
Could be.
Okay. Well, colleagues, I'd like to first wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. Gong Hei Fat Choi, Sun Yi Fa La. This Lunar New Year, 4/7/11, began on Sunday, February 10, 2013. And I've done this for the past 12 years, and I always get an insight when we speak of what year of the animal is being commemorated. So according to legends from ancient times, Buddha asked all the animals to meet with, to meet him on Chinese New Year. The 12 animals that came first each had a year named after them. He categorized that person born within a particular year would have that animal's personality. This year, we celebrate the Year of the Snake. The ancient Chinese believed if there was a snake in the house, the family would always be free from want. According to the Chinese zodiac, the snake is the intuitive, introspective, refined, and collected of the animal signs. They're attractive people who take cries with ease and do not become flustered easily. They are graceful people, exciting and dark at the same time. Contemplative and private, the snake is not outwardly emotional. He can appear cunning and reticent and works very modestly in the business environment. You are a snake if you were born in any of the following years: 1917, 1929, 1941, 1953, hey, 1965, 1977, 1989, 2001, or 2013. So council members, how many of you are born under the sign of the snake? How many do we have? Counselor, oh, there you go, Tom.
I did not know that to this day.
Well, now you know, Tom. Now we're going to be careful. Anybody else? Okay, well, you have Oprah Winfrey, Picasso, Jackie Kennedy Onassis, are examples of people who were all born the year of the snake. Members, as you know, each year we celebrate the Chinese Lunar New Year with residents from all over the city. Part of this tradition has also been to welcome and introduce our new Miss Chinatown and her court to our council chambers. So may I ask the queen and the court to please come to the microphone and join us? Please come on up. Let's welcome them to our council chamber. Please join me. Just right up here. I want to thank Chester Chung as well as Nick Young from the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, who've been a critical, playing a critical role in making sure that this great ceremony occurs along with the grand parade. We all believe have some of the family members here as well. So let's give our Chinatown Court a big round of applause, folks. Let's give them some love. The Miss Chinatown Contest calls for a competition amongst some of the brightest and most inspiring young women. The chosen queen and her court have the honor of representing Chinatown at numerous events in the community. Here before us today, we have young women who not only have big dreams, but are as well on the way in achieving them. These women have graduated from our local universities, finance education institutions. So with great pleasure, I'd like to present the court their certificates. So first, I'd like to call up... The first certificate? Okay, great. We have with us Elizabeth Ann, Miss Friendship. Congratulations. Just share a little bit about yourself and your background.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Ann. I'm from the city of Monterey Park, and I'm currently pursuing my master's in educational and clinical counseling at Azusa Pacific University. Thank you and Happy Chinese New Year.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Congratulations. Amber Feng. Amber?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll take more pictures in the back.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us today. My name is Amber Feng. I go to the University of Laverne, and I'm studying pre-med. And I hope you all have a beautiful day. Thank you.
Annie Wong.
Good morning. My name is Annie, and I'm the third princess from Diamond Bar. I'm currently practicing law. Thank you.
Christina Yang.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Christina Yang, and I am currently involved in healthcare finance. And I would like to thank you for having us here today, and we're very excited. And I hope you all have a lovely morning.
Kelly Ming.
Thank you so much. Hello, and thank you for having us today. My name is Kelly Ying, and I'm this year's first princess and Miss Photogenic. And I recently graduated from Cal State Fullerton, and I'm an aspiring law student. Thank you, and I hope to see you all at our parade this Saturday.
Wendy Shu.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wendy Shu, and I am this year's Miss Chinatown Los Angeles 2013. I am a double Trojan. I went, I went to USC for undergrad, studied international relations, and then I just recently graduated from the Gold School of Law. So thank you so much for having us. Okay, I'm not done. Okay. And, you know, thank you so much. It's amazing just seeing ourselves up on these screens. It's surreal. I just wanted to thank all the council members for having us here, and I wanted to wish everybody on behalf of the 2013 Court and the Chinese Chamber of Commerce a happy, a fulfilling, a prosperous, and healthy Year of the Snake. Thank you, and we hope to see you at our parade tomorrow. Thank you.
A big round of applause, folks. Come on, we can do better than that. We have a full house here. Come on, everybody, let's get your hands together. We also have with us our court, our little king, Austin Ying. Come on up, Austin. Right over here, Austin. Chloe Weinberg. Chloe? Nicholas Dylan-Fong. Come on up, Nicholas.
Come on, let's give them a round of applause.
So council members, I invite you to Chinatown this Saturday for the parade. Come enjoy our restaurants, visit our businesses, and celebrate the great city of Los Angeles. One more round of applause to our great court, our queen, and our little king and queen and their court. One more time, folks, thank you so much.
Mr. Labaj. Mr. Labaj.
Much, Mr. Reyes. I want to salute you for always helping to boost this parade, and many of us do join in the parade, which is great, and we see people from all over the city. But I just want to say to the ambassadors, to the wonderful young ladies, for the schools that you come from, the profession that you have. It makes me extremely proud of each and every one of you. And the young people right here and the excitement they shared when the dragons were dancing in the chambers here was so special. So you're a great credit to the community. I shout out to Guangzhou, China, our sister city, Old Canton, and many of the great people who've continued in the service for that. And congratulations, but we're so proud of you, and each of you spoke so articulately. And whatever you do professionally, you'll be the top of the class. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also congratulations. I've been to China, visited the beautiful country and the wonderful people. I know that every year, we normally have a federal judge that's here joining us for this. Ron Liu, our federal judge, who is recovering from some injuries. But to all of you, congratulations. I know Mr. Reyes is very concerned about the Chinese community and that we have a very thriving Chinatown doing very, very good work up there. So to the kings and queens, the princesses, the court, congratulations. So to the kings and queens, the princess, the court, congratulations. And your backgrounds are obviously dynamic. You are the future leaders of our great, great, great country. So bless you all and congratulations, and good wishes as we celebrate once again here in City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for bringing them forward. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Very much, Mr. President. Thank you to the court, thank you to the chamber, and thank you to Ed Reyes, who I want to thank after this will be 12 years. This is his last one as a council member. I know he has a permanent past to be invited back as a council member, a meritist, no doubt. I'll be out there for the parade with him, but he's been an extraordinary representative of Chinatown. Thank you, Ed, for what you've done. And thank you to the Chinatown community for being the geographic heart and the spiritual heart of the city. It was a Chi... Chinatown tells the story of LA, our bad days and our good days, and I think also the future days that are yet to come. So I really appreciate you being here, it being the place that still has just come back from 10 years ago. It was a very different place, it's back on its feet, and I know that it's getting ready to run. So I appreciate your leadership in making that happen, both Mr. Reyes and the chamber and the entire community. Congratulations again to the court. Thank you.
Mr. Englander, you've changed. You look like someone else, but...
We're constantly changing in this world. First, I want to say that the Year of the Snake, it's very cunning. Snake is very cunning. They're very clever, and they're very smart. So when you got a snake around you, listen to that snake, because they are charming. You know, they know how to charm, and they're very good at it. I want to say to the three young ones right there, welcome to the world. It's nice to have you, and I love your smiles. The Year of the Snake. You see, they got the great snake smiles. Well, Los Angeles is a megalopolis of the earth. We're from everywhere on the great planet. That makes us strong over 120 different languages. I've had the pleasure, of course, of being to China, to Hong Kong first, and Shanghai, and a lot of other places. It's a beautiful country. The relationship between China and the United States is one of the most critical ones going forward in this particular century that we're in today. So I hope the relationship that Los Angeles has helps in that general feeling between the United States and China. And thank you, Mr. Reyes, for making this happen, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. One more round of applause.
A former speaker as well. Let's invite Chester Chang, the president of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Chester Chang, I'd like to give you words. Nikki, come on.
Good morning, council members. My name is Nikki Young, executive director of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Our council member here is just being way too humble. He is actually our honorary grand marshal this year for our parade, so we definitely want to give him a round of applause. You know, without his assistance and without all of his efforts in what we do in Chinatown and all over LA County, it could not have been possible. So on behalf of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, our president, Chester Chang, and myself, and our court, thank you so much, council member.
Well, thank you, and as Councilor Garcetti was saying, it is my last year. I've been blessed to work with so many family associations, the chamber, the Business Investment District, and many of the hardworking people who live in Chinatown, who do business there. And I'd like to ask Chester Chang, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, the president, and all the council members, and of course, the special thanks and doing this so much for us on behalf of Chinese Chamber of Commerce. I'd be very honored to be here and great, great to help the city, and hopefully with chamber can do more for everyone, and if I can do anything, please let us know. Thank you so much, and happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Reyes, since you didn't tell us that you're an honorary grand marshal, I think somebody ought to give you their crown, and you need to wear it.
It might not fit. That being said, Gonghe Fa Choi, San Yi Fa La.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum, I believe. Let's please call the roll.
Hello, Clumska Ino. Englander Garcetti, weizar Kuretskoyan, Lamont Parks, Perry, Rais, Rosado Zine, Weston, 13 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Garcetti moves, weezar seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Kuretskoyan moves, Kurekoryan seconds.
Mr. President, there are requests from members to continue items 1A, 1B, and 4 to March 19. 1A, 1B, and 4 to March 19.
Okay, without objection, those items are continued.
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item noticed for public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, let's hold the, any of the items that have cards and move on to the next section. Or is there anything that we can vote on from?
Not from that section, sir.
Okay, so let's go on to, I believe it's 2 through 6?
You are correct, sir. Items 2 through 6 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members, specials. See none, let's prepare to vote on these. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Next section, Mr. Clerk, uh, Mr. Buscaino.
Fourth with for Mitch.
Okay, 5 and 6, fourth with. Okay, next section, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 7 through 12, there are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. You have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12.
So what's left, 10?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's vote, members, specials. Okay, let's vote on 10. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations.
All right, let's, Mr. Parks, are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Rosendale, you are a bushel of energy. You look great, and I'm watching you bop around. You are a welcome sight to see.
Very fortunate, to be here, to all the love that I've got around here, to the top of life, and bringing my act together.
Well, you look great. Mr. Parks, Ms. Barry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In honor of Black History Month, we would like to recognize Deputy District Attorney, the District Attorney, Ms. Jackie Lacy, who was sworn in on December 3, 2012. She is, give her a big... She is the first woman and first African-American woman to serve as the Los Angeles County District Attorney since the office was created in 1850. She oversees roughly 1,000 lawyers, nearly 300 investigators, and about 800 support staff employees. Ms. Lacy has spent most of her professional life as a prosecutor, manager, and executive in the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. A Los Angeles native and graduate of the University of Southern California Law School, Jackie joined the largest local prosecutorial office in the nation in 1986 as a deputy district attorney. She worked her way through the ranks as a frontline prosecutor. While serving as a deputy district attorney, she prosecuted hundreds of criminal, serious criminal cases. She won national attention for her successful prosecution of the county's first race-based hate crime murder. She was recognized by the United States Department of Justice in May 2000 for prosecuting this case and for participating on the Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee. Jackie has been selected twice as Deputy District Attorney of the Month by her peers. In the late 2000s, she took on management and executive roles in the District Attorney's Office. Her duties included reviewing nearly every major case the office prosecuted, serving on the office's Special Circumstance Committee that reviews death penalty eligible cases, and making high-level policy decisions affecting the pursuit of justice and the management of the office. In 2011, Jackie was named Chief Deputy District Attorney and was responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of the office. She also considered federal, state, and local legislation to determine the impact on the county's criminal justice system. Ms. Lacy has overseen the development of several groundbreaking crime-fighting initiatives within her office. They include the nation's first animal cruelty prosecution program, the graffiti prosecution program, the Project Safe Neighborhoods gun prosecution program. Ms. Lacy was key in the creation of alternative sentencing courts to deal with specific nonviolent offenders. These include the Los Angeles County Veterans Court, the Los Angeles County Women's Reentry Court, and the Los Angeles County Co-Occurring Disorders Court. Ms. Lacy is a graduate of the University of California Irvine and Dorsey High School in Los Angeles. She and her husband David have two adult children. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, District Attorney, it is an honor and a pleasure to commend you during Black History Month and to congratulate you on becoming the first African-American female Los Angeles County District Attorney.
Thank you very much, Jan. And I just wanted to add my voice, having watched our DA go through the ranks, and those who have not gone through civil service do not realize just how difficult it is to start at the entry level and one day end up at the top. She's a person that, as I've introduced her in many churches, is a prosecutor with a heart, and I can recall several months ago, as she started on this journey, and we sat and talked for a number of minutes in which she was concerned as whether her candidacy would be taken seriously. And we said, not only do you have the background, experience, but you certainly are going to be able to make an impact. And when we think about, as Jan commented, on the death penalty committee, or her involvement with bringing the whole county involved with the DNA process, when you look at what her measured view on three strikes, these are things that I like to call her a prosecutor with a heart. And she's a person that looks at things, alternative sentences, she has a balance as it relates to dealing with criminal activity and serious crime, at the same time understanding the limits of warehousing people and where those services will come from. So I'm just pleased to be here to honor her on Black History Month. We could have waited a month and made it Women History Month, but we decided to do it earlier, and we're just pleased to have you here as an honoree in the city of Los Angeles.
Oh, my goodness. Beautiful. Thank you.
And Jackie, before you begin, I have several members that would like to congratulate you personally. Usually, I go after all of the members, but I'm going to go first and say that it's, personally, I'm very proud of you. It was a pleasure to assist you. Members, she has a sister-in-law that lives on my street, and so I wanted to make sure that I didn't anger the neighbors. No, you are qualified, and we're all proud of you, and you're gonna do a terrific job in what you've done. You've broken a barrier. You've shattered this glass ceiling, and I would think that many, many people will now believe that they could do and be anything. With that said, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations, Jackie, madam district attorney. It's, I'm a little partial, but I think District Attorney's Office is a wonderful place, not only to make a career, but a place to make a difference in this world. And I was raised in a family where it said you can have the best of both worlds. You decide when not to prosecute when you think that's in the interest of justice, and decide when to prosecute when it is as well. It's almost like being a defense lawyer and a prosecutor at the same time. And in this building right now, we have history swirling around us. Our first, or, you know, our second, excuse me, but the certainly longest-serving black police chief, a black council president, our first black district attorney, chance of first black female mayor as well. All of those pieces are the strains of history here in this city, and for you to have achieved this is something that's a victory, not just in the African-American community, but for each one of us. And, you know, reading interviews with you right afterwards, I know that you realize what a sacrifice you made to your family and to your friends to be here. And I know that every single day, you take that with a great sense of responsibility. The difference you make and the sacrifice you made is something that you did for this entire county. So congratulations. You're following in great footsteps, and I'm very proud to be able to call you the district attorney of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Godspeed.
Mr. Weizar.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Ms. Lacy. I think it was just quite an emotional experience to be at your swearing-in, where I think all of us were so proud, not only to acknowledge all the work you've done and to be able to shatter this glass ceiling, but also, as we sat around and heard your life story, it reminded all of us of what's possible in this country, and what's possible when you dedicate yourself to your work, to public service. And we are just so proud of you. We're so proud of our county, and we look forward to working with you to make this a better place for all of us. Congratulations again, we're so proud.
Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Councilmember, I, surprisingly, you might, you might be surprised that I'm standing up to speak for Jackie Lacy, given recent circumstances. But I did have the pleasure of having breakfast with Jackie at a recent Martin Luther King breakfast, and we sat next to each other. And I just wanted to mention that Jackie's, when you talk about compassion, there, to be more demonstrative of that, we had a nice conversation about her intentions to work on the issue of mental illness and how it impacts our criminal justice system, and particularly our jails. And she was the one who pointed out to me that, that it's a sad fact that our county jail is the largest mental health institution in the country. And given that, I think that, notwithstanding that this is African-American Heritage Month, I think it's because she's a woman that she will bring the kind of compassion to that institution that will help us provide better services and hopefully reduce unnecessary incarcerations for people who are truly mentally ill. So with that, I commend her and wish her well on almost all of your cases.
Thank you.
Couldn't help it. Yes.
Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, when Chuck Linder started talking to me about you, I knew we had a superstar. Steve Cooley, a great DA that I supported wholeheartedly, obviously was a big backer of yours. What I like most is nonpartisanism. It's not a Democrat or Republican that matters, it's the people that matter. And where Democrats and Republicans work together in a sense of commitment to the betterment of all society, that's what I like, and that's why I support a Cooley, even though I'm a Democrat. Democrats don't rule the world, the people do, and the more that energy comes out, the better it is. And Steve Cooley has shown real leadership. The beauty of coming here is we have a television camera. 50 to 100,000 people watch this program. And I say to the folks out there, another glass ceiling has been busted, another historic moment has happened in this great nation. Be proud to be part of the American system of nonpartisanism. So congratulations. I know you're gonna do a great job. Let me know whatever we can do as a city to cooperate with you on all the issues that are in front of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Jackie, I saw you on the campaign trail. Some of the fundraisers were a lot of crowds, some were smaller, but you were there persistent the whole time. And at the USC, the Gaitan Center, when you were sworn in as the district attorney for Los Angeles County, but you've worked your whole life, you've worked your whole life to move to that level, administration and prosecution in that fine office. So I want to offer my congratulations to all of my colleagues. It's a task that you really put a lot of effort, and while they didn't think you were the favorite candidate, you came out victorious, and you've obviously carried through in your endeavor as the district attorney of Los Angeles County. So congratulations to you. It was nice to meet your husband and your children, but the fact is, they were supporting you as you were moving along with this daunting progress and the process, and the progress was made, and now the victory is here. So congratulations, and thanks to my colleagues for bringing you forward for this honor. Thank you.
Joey B.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Ms. Lacy, you shocked them all. And for, so when I first read your name, and like many, it's like, who is she? And your hard work, your compassion and character that along your career has got to where your position today. And I just want to offer our gratitude, and when it comes to specifically an issue that's so important and near and dear to my heart is a reentry program where, when folks get out of prison, we need to be able to embrace them, bring in the faith-based organization, bring in our trade tech, all of our labor family in to be there for them. And I know that's so important to you, and I look forward to working with you and your team to address that critical issue, specifically in my district in Watts. And when I look at you, I look at the young African-American woman, a girl, it's sitting in a chair today at Jordan High School, looking at you and saying, perhaps one day I too can be the district attorney of the county of Los Angeles. So congratulations, thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Very much. Jackie, you went to Dorsey, right?
I did.
Dorsey Downs, colors are green and white. Great school, great history, but what is great, Jordan threw me off a little there, but... Great school, great history, but what is great, Jordan threw me off a little there, but what is great when someone in our county, in our city rises to a position and comes from our communities, which is so special on that. And I just wanted to thank you for serving, and there's a special role, and also the commitment that has been made by the county to restore the Hall of Justice, which one day you'll be sitting on the top of that building overseeing the county's justice system for that. Congratulations to you and your family, and we wish you all the best and any help that we can give you, just let us know. And thank you, Ms. Perry, as always, for bringing in someone very special, Mr. Parks as well.
Mr. Reyes.
Wanted to rise and congratulate you and thank you for your commitment. I caught a glimpse of it at one of the venues where we met over at the River Center, and the issues of environmental justice and what's important to our region, to our city, all the communities that are connected to our waterways that have been neglected, near the rail yards, all the issues that impact our quality of life. I'm glad you're there because you understand some of our challenges and are aware of the tribulations of our youth who are dropping out and, and numbers are above 50%. The whole issue of diabetes and obesity and all that connected to our environment, and that's something that we need to focus on. So I appreciate your being there as a candidate, and I love the fact you're here now as a District Attorney. Thank you so much.
Okay, we've been joined by Mr. Bill Carter. And now, Bill, you have a few words to say.
Good morning, and thank you, thank you for letting me speak. I was at one point a deputy district attorney in the LA County District Attorney's Office, and I had the great pleasure to work with our new district attorney, Jackie Lacy. I was also in the Environmental Crimes Division in the District Attorney's Office. So I know how important environmental crimes and labor and workplace safety laws are to our new district attorney, and I know how special that type of work is going to be for the District Attorney's Office. But the one thing I want to add is, last week I had the pleasure of attending that event regarding Miracle on East LA with Mr. Hernandez and his group, and how important that is. And I got to see the district attorney speaking to a group of young people. And she said, "Look at me, I'm someone that hopefully can be a role model to you, and you can aspire to do something." Coming from your neighborhoods, coming from your station in life, and I thought it was so moving to hear Jackie say that. And that, to me, is the most important thing that our new district attorney can do, it can be a role model for those people in our community and say, "Look, I can do that too." And that is so important, I think, in addition to all the great legal work you're going to do. And I think you're going to be the best district attorney this county's ever going to have. Thank you, Jackie.
All right. Now let's hear from the county's top lawyer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, city council members. I almost want to call you by the first name because we met along the campaign trail. You know, I'm so humbled and still getting used to the idea that being the district attorney of LA County is a big darn deal. And I am loving the job. We've had an exciting, it's almost on March 13th, it'll be 100 days, we've had an exciting 100 days. I thank Councilman Bernard Parks, who I always want to call Chief, because that's where I started working with him when he was the chief of LAPD, and certainly Councilwoman Perry for singling me out, because there are so many in our county who are doing well, for singling me out and choosing to bestow this beautiful honor on me. I realize that while being elected made history, I intend to earn my legacy. And we have already launched our priorities. We do intend to address the mental health issue by the expansion of alternative sentencing courts. We do intend to get a handle on public safety realignment, so that you can remain safe and so that your constituents can remain safe. We do intend to expand environmental crimes, so that we can continue to address the hazards to our water and our air, particularly in poor neighborhoods. I do intend to go after, very aggressively, identity thieves who steal our identity through our gas cards and through our restaurants. They do not know who they have met. We are working on some creative projects, and we are going after those people. And finally, I was brought up to honor your seniors, and we are going to launch a campaign to warn seniors about the financial crimes that are out there that are plaguing them, the false contractors, the folks who call them and ask them to wire money. So we are aggressively going after and making those our goals. I am so honored and am using my office, not only to accomplish these things, but I think it's very important, there is a lack, there's a lack of women and a lack of minorities when it comes to law enforcement leadership. And so I am using this office, this God-given gift of this office, to inspire other women, like the women you just met from the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, to inspire them to go after a leadership role in law enforcement. And to the degree that I can use my life and any moments of my time to say to people, "Look, I'm a kid from Dorsey High School, a public school, who came from working-class parents and who worked her way up in an office from the bottom to the top, and the voters decided that I was qualified and worthy to lead the largest prosecutor's office in the nation." And I still say, how cool is that? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, where is Dorsey High School located?
In the southwest part of Los Angeles, right off Exposition.
What council district?
The 10th district.
Just say that one more time.
The 10th district, that's.
My district, right?
And do you know who Susan B. Dorsey was? Let me have that, let me ask that, Mr. President, let me come right back at you.
She's a little older than me, I never had the pleasure.
She was the superintendent of schools for Los Angeles Unified, and she was the first woman to have a name after her in our school district, which is so special. And at one time, we only had two role models such as that. So let's hear it for Dorsey High.
Okay, for our, yes, yes, Mr. Labange. I see I got you wound up.
I know, but Avak was there shaking his head while I said, "Let's hear it for Dorsey." He's a Roman from LA, so Southern League, go Avak.
Okay, with that said, I want to say hello to Jackie, Jackie Hawthorne. Okay, Mr. Buscagino for today's final presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm delighted to add to our city's African American Heritage Month celebration by bringing to you a special treat. Throughout our short but dense history, the contributions of African Americans to the progress of the United States has been quite significant. And while we are doing a better job of documenting that legacy, we often find that the resources for proper accounting of the events are inadequate. In our classrooms and in popular media, we get the bullet point version of history, and it usually goes like this: slavery, the Civil War, the Civil Rights Movement, and the election of Barack Obama. The Civil Rights Movement, which one could spend a lifetime studying, is all watered down. I often see this version, Rosa Parks, dogs and horses, lunch counters, and Martin Luther King's Jr., "I Have a Dream" speech. It's often left to those few individuals who have the talent and motivation to present and preserve this legacy in a way that does justice to those that made it. When Bonnie Boswell's documentary, where's Bonnie? Come on up right here, Bonnie, we can see you, there you go. When Bonnie's documentary film, The Power Broker, Whitney Young's Fight for Civil Rights, was brought to my attention, I thought it'd be appropriate for the film to be shared through the government of the great city of Los Angeles. And it was through government and working within the existing white-dominated power structure that Whitney Young was able to be so effective in advancing the cause of civil rights and effectuating change in public policy. We are all familiar with the dance between power and influence that is characteristic of government. Though we've made great strides in making our government more public, open, and transparent than it was in the 1960s, there are still meetings, phone calls, and lunches where much work gets done behind the scenes. But it was Whitney Young's keen understanding of this that allowed him to become such an effective advocate and for the advancement of civil rights. This documentary gives us an insider view of how progress was made through that period while honoring one of its foremost strategies, strategist that is, Whitney Young Jr. And at this time, I'd like to draw your attention to the video screen to play a quick preview of The Power Broker.
You don't get black power by chanting it. You get it by doing what the other groups have done. The Irish kept quiet, they didn't shout "Irish pow," or "Jew pow," or "Italian pow." They kept their mouths shut and took over the Police Department of New York City and the mayorship of Boston.
Whitney Young's genius was, he knew how to accomplish what other people were merely for.
I think that Whitney Young was a prophet. I think that he died precisely at a time when few people understood how brilliant his vision for racial transformation of American power was. He was a figure who was calm, who was purposeful, who was measured.
By the young, I mean Whitney Young, he's the Wall Street of the Civil Rights Movement.
But they understood power, and they understood politics, and most of all, they understood people. They said Martin was in the streets, and Roy and Thurgood were in the courts, and Whitney was in the boardroom. One could not have been successful without the other.
All right. With that, it gives me great honor to introduce to you the filmmaker who is also Whitney Young's niece, Ms. Bonnie Boswell, who's here today with her husband Rod Hamilton. And I'm going to give you a quick bio on Bonnie. Bonnie's an award-winning reporter, producer, commentator, and talk show host. She's a graduate of Harvard University and the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. She won a Golden Mike Award for a one-hour news program she created for NBC. She's been a news reporter for NBC Los Angeles, the co-host of a national cable television news talk show, and an associate producer for ABC's 2020. Bonnie, say a few words for us, let's give a warm welcome to Bonnie Boswell.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you to other members of this body. I'm really delighted to be here and really proud to have this recognition. When Whitney Young, my uncle, passed away, the great cartoonist from Los Angeles, Conrad, did a drawing that showed one side of a bridge, black, the other, white. And underneath, he wrote the words, "Bridge Builder, Whitney Young." I think that says it all. Many people have asked why I've done this film, and of course, he was my uncle, and there is that legacy relationship. But also, I was very concerned about what was going on in our world domestically and in our foreign affairs. And I thought the concept of being a bridge builder really needed to be lifted up. So often, we look to people who get the headlines, but we don't really go behind to honor and recognize the people who do the hard work of getting things done. And I think it's important for our youth in particular to know that these are important roles to play. And so this was the purpose, and I've been delighted, as we've gone around the country showing this film, that young people do in fact get it. We showed this film at the Whitney Young Magnet High School in Chicago, where our first lady attended. And I wasn't sure about the body language of the students at first, whether they were understanding anything. They were, as many young people are, looking like they were asleep. But as soon as the film ended, they understood. They were saying, you know, this was a man who brought something to the table. So I'm really delighted that people seem to really understand this, and also understand that this is not a film about the past, it's really about our present and future. And the great leader and civil rights activist actor, Ozzie Davis, said this very well. He said, "Whitney Young represents the best we have of someone who links our past to our present to our future." So I hope as we move forward, we can lift up this kind of skill of leadership of being a bridge builder, so that everybody can follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. What a special presentation, to see those words and that history and all, which is so important.
It's coming, it's coming, absolutely. And on behalf of Quincy, where's Quincy, where's our, oh, right behind us. Well, thank you Quincy O'Neil, my field deputy in Watts, who helped arrange this presentation. Bonnie, just like to present to you this proclamation here, recognizing you as a filmmaker and also highlighting the great work that your uncle did for this entire country. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bonnie Boswell, good job, Joe.
Also, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Desiree Getera as the National Engagement Consultant for ITVS, the Independent Television Service. So Desiree, please come forward to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Buscagino. Thank you to the council for hosting us today. It's an honor to be here with you to support Bonnie Boswell and the legacy of her uncle, civil rights maven, Whitney Young. I'm here representing ITVS, the Independent Television Service. ITVS is mandated by Congress, and we are funded by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. Our mission is to help fund filmmakers that tell stories about people and places that seldom get commercial media attention. We also have a mission to ensure that the largest possible audience can see these films. That is why Ms. Boswell's film, The Power Broker, will have a national broadcast this coming Monday on PBS, on the PBS series Independent Lens, which ITVS produces. That is also why The Power Broker has been screening in public forums across the country during this Black History Month as part of Community Cinema. Community Cinema is a groundbreaking public education and civic engagement initiative featuring free monthly screenings of PBS presentations. Community Cinema is on location in more than 95 cities nationally, bringing together leading organizations, community members, public television stations, to learn, discuss, and get involved in the key social issues of our time. Tonight in San Pedro at 7:00 PM, The Power Broker will screen at the Grand Annex. Admission to this and all of our Community Cinema screenings is free, and I invite you and your constituents to join us. ITVS Community Cinema will also continue to work in partnership with Councilmember Buscagino's office to offer students screening of The Power Broker later this month. We'll host this screening using a new social media platform called OV, which stands for the Online Video Engagement Experience. Students from area middle and high schools will be able to simultaneously watch The Power Broker from their personal computers, and not only engage in a conversation with each other, but also in real time with Ms. Boswell. Once again, I'd like to thank the council for the recognition you're providing to Ms. Boswell, The Power Broker, and a civil rights hero that we should never forget, Mr. Whitney Young.
You're here.
Very good, thank you very much.
I also have with us the president, the new president-CEO of the Los Angeles Urban League. Help me welcome Mr. Nolan Rollins.
First of all, let me just thank you for the opportunity to address each and every one of you. This is frankly, my first time being in front of you and my eighth day on the job. So I feel that I'm in the right place at the right time. History is only made history when you have soothsayers. It's only made history when you have people who are willing to tell the truth, no matter how good it is or no matter how painful it is. And I would just simply like to thank Bonnie for being honest with our story, not just the Urban League story, but the nation's story. Being honest with what it takes to actually make communities stronger, being honest with what it takes to ensure that every individual is treated with dignity and respect. And I think what you'll see from this documentary, this story, this soothsayer, is the truth, is the truth about our nation, is the truth about our organization, and most importantly, is the truth about how you actually get things done. So on behalf of our movement, the Urban League movement, and the 100 affiliate CEOs around the nation, and on behalf of a person who gets to stand in a very interesting position, my mentor just happened to be mentored by Whitney Young. And spending time, as I do with John Mack, allows me to understand how we got to where we are, and more importantly, where we're going. And I just appreciate Bonnie for telling our story in a way that's honest, in a way that's true, but most importantly, in a way that's going to... that's true, but most importantly, in a way that's going to make our community and this city and the nation a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you. So another plug, the film will be highlighted tonight at 7:00 PM at the, with the Friends of the San Peter Library and Grand Vision Foundation. Collectively combined, they'll be presenting this free screening of The Power Broker at the Grand Annex located at 434 West Sixth Street in downtown San Pedro. Also, this Sunday, on your local PBS station, they'll also air this documentary, Sunday, February 18th at 10:00 PM. And for those who don't know, our very own John Mack is highlighted in, in The Power Broker as well. So thanks again to Bonnie for your compassion, your, your love to spread the good news. We thank you and we recognize you. God bless you. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Buscagno. And Bonnie, congratulations. Let's give her a big hand for all her work right there.
It is Monday. So correction.
Correct.
PBS, Monday, not Sunday. Monday, 10:00 PM, PBS, or your local PBS station, Monday, 10:00 PM. All right.
All right, Joe, here we go. Congratulations again, Bonnie. Thank you. Mr. Coretz, you have an item right now you want us to call?
Yes, I'd like to ask that item one C be continued for 30 days.
One C to be considered for 30 days. So ordered.
And, Mr. President, 30 days brings us to March 19.
March 19th. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number seven, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks, Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, Juan Dude, three cards, three people. Mr. Sacks, look right up here. Here we go.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This is reap programs, reap violations. And I'd like to read here, it says, "Inasmuch as the owners have corrected the cited reap violations." And the, what? Anyway, Jack was out for a walk with his cow and he met a salesman with three beans. And the salesman said, "If I give you, if you give me the cow, I'll give you the three beans." And the three beans, Jack took the three beans back home to his mom. And his mom said, "What the hell did you get three beans for?" And Jack said, "I got three beans for the cow. Let's plant the beans." And so...
He's not talking about this.
Mr. City Attorney, thank you very much for that ruling. Arnold, stay on the subject.
There doesn't seem to be anybody here to talk to, so why should I talk about what's on the subject?
All right, you've completed your comment. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Keep moving.
But again, we're talking about here cited corrections, or corrections that have been cited. So I'm, again, I'm asking about, you know, you took the time, you wanted to do a survey about illegal billboards, and you wanted to do a survey about illegal sidewalks or cracked sidewalks. So it's about personnel. Now you have an ordinance that you went after, LMA get tough on bank-owned properties. You have yet to cite and issue a notice about any foreclosed property in the city of LA. And according to this article from June...
This is not regarding the rape.
Thank you very much. It's not regarding this particular issue. Speak to the issue, Mr. Sacks.
...guarding personnel who are citing reap violations, Mr. President. And if you have personnel to cite reap violations, then I would certainly think that you would have personnel to cite bank-owned properties that have fallen into foreclosure and collect $1,000 a day. It's the use of your personnel, Mr. President. And if the city attorney doesn't understand that...
All right, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh, please, followed by Mr. Dude.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for identification purposes only, chairman of the Antonio Viegas for Pope campaign. What does reap mean? And this is very important. This isn't a joke, reap. And many cities do not have reap. And I want you to know out there, and I don't care that these people aren't listening to me, because 100,000 people out there are listening to me, and a lot of you are renters. Reap stands for Rent Escrow Account Program. Now what does that mean? That means if there's a violation on your, in your unit, you can go to the city. The city will investigate, and if the landlord is in violation, the land, you don't pay your rent to the landlord anymore, you pay it to the city. It's an excellent thing. It is not a joke. And I'm not getting up here to waste your time. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Dude.
Yes, once upon a time, there was a little redhead. Oh, never mind, we're not telling fairy tales, right? But we are. Why, what is the city out there being a landlord for? Why are you being landlords? We should not have any more landlords. It doesn't make sense to have a system where nobody can afford housing. It doesn't make sense to have a system where people are paying rent and not getting things done, because all their lives, they spend paying rent. See, we can do a lot more without this rent escrow. It's, it's all a waste of money. You have to implement one law and another law and another law and another law just to keep people in a home. And it doesn't make sense. It makes more sense to create a parallel system where we can all have a home and not have to pay rent. We do not want to be slaves anymore. Nobody wants...
Mr. President, he is not talking about the rent escrow program any longer.
Thank you. Please state of the subjects ahead of you right there.
Okay, let the people go. I'm an official candidate for Rosenthal District.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. That completes your comments. All right, next item will be before us. Mr. Clerk will be the voter. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item.
That brings us to item eight, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Dude.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for identification purposes only, anybody but Garcetti for mayor. Remember, I don't care about these people here. I don't talk about them. I talk to you 100,000 people out there. They never speak directly to you. And what we have here is a deal where AMPASS, the Motion Picture Academy, one of the largest nonprofit organizations on the planet Earth, is getting $300,000 in a contract for holding the awards at the Dolby Theater. Actually, when you add up all the money that it costs LA for the theater, they should be paying us about $1 million a year for what we give them. It is Hollywood. They don't own Hollywood. They don't own that name, AMPASS. The Academy Awards don't own that. We own that. And the Academy Awards is ours. Look at it. Check it out. Relative to city resources of the Academy Motion Picture, approved the negotiated payment of $300,000? That's chicken feed for what we spend. We have police who are all on overtime when they're guarding the, the stars at the Academy Award. We're not, we, all we're asking for is we go back to the system we had when Tom Bradley was mayor. And it was, Academy Awards have always been held except a couple of times in Santa Monica and a couple, in Los Angeles, a system where they paid us for the privilege. And we should not, and paid us much more than $300,000. $300,000 is, is pipsqueak money. But look, all these people get on their knees in front of the AMPASS, the Motion Picture Academy, for contributions to their campaigns. So when I finish and the others finish, you won't hear a word, not one question, nothing, because they are in the pocket of the Academy Award, which is the naked man with the sword between his legs. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dude, please.
The guy is absolutely right. You're giving rich people $300,000, which you're taking from the poor people that you put liens on their houses. Come on, dudes. What a way to do business. Take it from the poor and give it to the rich. Are we stupid? You, you, you got Robin Hood. See, that's why I'm a court jester. I go back to those eras where, actually, there was one guy taking from the rich and giving to the poor. But we got it all backwards now. See, Rosenthal, I own the, I own your district.
Please, Mr. City Attorney, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dude, thank you. That completes the public comment. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on this very important item. Next item.
That brings us to item nine, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh. And Mr. Dude.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for a full list of my, our email blast, The Front Page Online, and then John Walsh, The Front Page Online, John Walsh. Now, again, this is number nine. It concerns amending a prior council action for the vacation of streets. Now let me tell you what the vacation of streets means. And I'm talking to you, not to them. I don't even want them to pay attention to what I'm saying, because you will decide out there on March, who's going to run the city. And if you like these people, okay. Now what is a vacation? It isn't two weeks in, in Tijuana. A vacation is the city giving over the city's property to some owner. The street, we no longer own the street. They do this all the time. I, I, I've been asking for an account of how many acres have we given away in the last five years of city property? Now you know, have to know how to do it. You have to know how to grease palms. You have to know how to get put on your Monica Lewinsky kneepads when...
And Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, hold this time, please. Mr. Walsh, please direct your comments.
I'm asking the city attorney. Have I said anything disruptive? Have I said anything disruptive?
Yeah, you did right there for me.
No, no.
You don't ask the city attorney, ask me.
What did I say disruptive?
Continue with your comments on street vacations.
Okay. I won that battle, and it's a fight of all time. Vacations are never mentioned, you never hear them, they go through, it's part of the corrupt system like Clinton and Monica Lewinsky.
Mr. City Attorney, for the note on this issue here, street vacations are usually properties that once were private parcels that city had easements that then returned to the property owner. Mr. Walsh, although sometimes does say things very correctly, should go to engineering school for that. We'll introduce him to the city engineer. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Dude.
City councils should go to government school because you don't know what government is. You see, government by the people, not by a people.
He is not talking about this item.
Please talk on the issue.
Issue, yeah, vacation of streets, giving back people property. The city is not supposed to own property to begin with. It's illegal for the city to own property. It's not legal for the government to own property. It belongs to the people. Do you agree? Thank you. And the people pay for everything, so what are we talking about?
Where's Lion Street? You know where Lion Street is? No, you don't. It's right next to Piper Tech, and this is combining city property to use it to efficiency.
I don't, I don't care where it is. It's somewhere in the world.
Thank you very much. We did it well.
It's owned by people.
Thank you very much. So there's no speakers on the queue. This is for a Piper Tech consolidation of public lands, there to remove of a public street. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on that item. Next one.
That brings us to item 11, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks, John Walsh. John Walsh is done? He's complete? Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for your contribution today. Arnold Sacks.
Yes, sir. Yes, a quick moment. Will item number one be available for public comment? It's deferred, but it, was all the items?
No, it's already been deferred. So continue.
But all the items are number one, or just some of them?
All the items are number, we deferred it all. We already handled it. Come back another time. Continue on this one. Your clock's running.
Deferred all of them, huh? Just in front, I thought they only deferred a few of them. Anyway, this is a rental agreement between the Watts Neighborhood Council and the City of Los Angeles through the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. So based on what you do with the business improvement districts and how you have a business improvement district that is created and run by a nonprofit, my question would be...
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
You know...
Talk about the item, Mr. Sacks.
You have an item here. It says here, "The Watts Civic Center ACLP is not part of the Neighborhood Council." What is its basis as part of this agreement? Is it a nonprofit? Is it a for-profit? You use an example, and the city attorney blows his brains out. The example is, when you create property improvement districts, you have them run by a nonprofit organization. This is a rental agreement between the Watts Neighborhood Council and the Neighborhood Council Empowerment and the City of Los Angeles. So if the Watts Neighborhood Council is the renter, then what part of this process is being used or upheld by the Watts Civic Center ACLP? Now that's not the renter. So is that a nonprofit that's used to run this Neighborhood Council? Can the city attorney clarify that?
No. I'll tell you what's gonna happen. Go to the ropes right now, Mr. Sacks. Ryan, the deputy for the 15th will handle it. Go to the ropes. Thank you, mister. Mr. Dude, next speaker. One minute, Mr. Dude. Thank you, Mr. Dude. There's no other cards, no other speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So ordered. Ryan, will you report to the ropes for Mr. Sacks? Over there, on the side. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Next item.
That brings us to item number 12, called Special for Cards.
We have one card, Mr. Sacks.
So again, thank you very much, Mr. President. Here is the same situation. Now why I go to the ropes or don't go to the ropes? I'm not going to the ropes. If the city attorney can correct me on camera that I'm not talking on the subject, then the city attorney should be able to correct me and explain what this second organization is. It's the same thing here. On behalf of the Neighborhood, West Adams Neighborhood Council, the Southern Community Outreach Enterprise, enterprise, what is their purpose? How many other neighborhood councils have these secondary organizations that go hand in hand with the lease that the city has for office space? I don't recall. Maybe the city attorney can clarify that. Why can't you do that in public instead of over on the side of the ropes, Mr. President?
Because I want to help you, Mr. Sacks, and you live in Lenox.
You're not helping me.
And I want to teach you about LA.
You're helping.
And we have deputies who will help you.
You are helping the citizens of LA who want to serve on the Neighborhood Councils and give them a little bit more information. I'm not necessarily concerned. I don't live in the city of LA.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. The young deputies over there if you want them. That completes that item. Let's, no speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, now what's before us is public comment, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Walsh for public comment, followed by Mr. Jones, Mr. Dude, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, and Mr. Cooper. We all come forward and sit down.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our website for our endorsements, or for all of my email blasts, go to The Front Page Online, John Walsh. Google that, you'll get lots and lots that's not on this website. Okay, let's start with Garcetti. That commercial of yours, your fighting not look like a dweeb. Don't stand there with an expensive sweater going like this while kids behind you are robbing your attention by playing ball. There's nothing...
Mr. President, he should speak to the council as a whole.
Speak to the council as a whole, Mr. Walsh, continue. Continue.
The council should know that Garcetti's commercial is a joke. People are paying attention to the kids playing ball behind them because they're cute. I know he's cute too. See, I can't use you here. I can't, second person, no. Only third person. That, okay, East Hollywood today, no crime in Hollywood, a body found in the dumpster in East Hollywood today. Earlier this week, another murder. Two murders in five weeks. And all Garcetti says, well, it's better than 15 years ago when we had damn tanks on our street, when we had, we had police coming in here, we had the army taking over during the riots or the insurrection. Yeah, it's better than then, but it's a hell of a lot worse than it was five years ago. You want it to be like that, Ray? Vote for Garcetti. Prop A. A stands for always. It's a forever tax. You say this tax is to cure a tiny problem of a year or two? No. Vote against it. It is a racist tax so that the racist LAPD can shoot down and burn more black people. That's why you should vote for Prop A. That's what it's about. The LAPD look like fools all over the world. And it was their own cop killer that they raised, their Frankenstein monster that they killed with a burner grenade. And these people up here, including Rosendahl, are all for the racist LAPD.
Thank you very much, but I don't like those tone of you, Mr. Walsh, but I thank you for your public comment. Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know what kind of black history you were raised with, but the first thing I was ever taught about black people in this country, that they were 9% of the Revolutionary War. They got a right to be at the table. Mr. Buscano, you think you know your black history starts with the slavery? I'm a Rosa Recrusio. I know the Freemasons formula for the courtroom is four paces for one word. That's an objection. The only person I'm going to listen to from the district attorney's office is nothing. The only person I trust in this city to investigate the Los Angeles City Police Department is Condoleezza Rice. Mr. Wesson? Anything less than that woman coming down here and saying, Mr. Jones, sit down and be quiet? I got you? This is all about probability determinants, casualities, possibilities, and throwing a little uncertainty and might call it a formula. Mr. San Pedro, why don't you say hello to my sister? Oh, hang on. Again, like nobody's contacted my sister in the city? She's not going to take any credit for what I say, but she's going to tell you one thing right now. I'm the nice one in the family. You piss her off, she's going to spit you out like an olive plug. What I'm concerned about is the $10,500,000 that's coming into paper, the police department's functionality. What percentage of the police department is actually being sidelined by $32.5 million being spent before you even have the authorization to have it? What percentage of the police department is being funded by a federal agency?
Mr. Jones, hold the clock. Step just an inch away. Continue with your comments. Don't hurt the microphone. If you hurt the microphone, you can't be heard. Okay?
Okay. I get you. You're all rascals. You know, my dad's, every Democrat was a slick willy. It's no personal, okay? But I know the vocabulary of capitalism. And any slick willy coming in for the next six seats, it's all the same language. Thank you very much.
Councilman. I guess anybody can be anything in office. I mean, what do you actually do? You rob the people. It's, it's easy to be a bandit. You know, when you have the license, it's really easy to rob the people when you have a license to steal. And it's legal. Isn't that cool? I'm going to become one of you. A thief with a license. But you know what? I'm not the type of person that would do that to people. I would do that to corporations. I would punish the bankers that you rewarded with trillions of dollars. See? You bailed the banks out and you sold the people out. Not you in particular, you're going to say, because you like to pass the ball on to the next, you know, generation. Or it was the other guys. It wasn't us. It was the federal government. Government is government. And government should be by the people, not by a bunch of little idiots, which are a very small minority. That includes Obama. That includes all the Republicans, all the Democrats, all the, because there are not that many. But they're all telling us what to do. And the people don't want to be homeless. The people don't want to be without services. We put in our money and we get nothing back. It's time to stop doing business that way.
Followed by Dr. Williams. Followed by the pride of Lenox, Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bobby Cooper. I'm here today, I'm still trying to get in my business. You got 70 police officers keeping me out of my business illegally. Paperwork that their constituents served on me isn't worth the ink that it was printed on. I'd like to get in my office, please. I'm being harassed every day. Every day I'm losing thousands of dollars. You know, I've filed claims with the city and I intend on amending that claim. You know, your district attorney is in default. He's not, he's not complying with the court orders to pay us, to send us out these claim forms. Instead of that, he's sick the police on us, you know, to harass us. I'd like to get in my office, please. I'd like to get in my bank accounts. How long is it going to take for me to come down here? I started business 13 years ago. You can't come in and take over my business, my life, run my family out of the place. These are people from overseas. I submit their names and you omit their names from the even, from public comment. What is this? I'm tired. I've got medical problems on account of you people. You don't need my money to run the city, or do you? I want to get in my bank accounts. You got four Latinos at Bank of America holding more than three quarters of a million dollars of my company's. You know, please let me in my business. Quit harassing me. You can't steal from God. That money came to me from my father, God. The work that I've done, products that they're selling to mine, that they're marketing out of that building. There's 10 floors in there. This lady wants me to move out of one building. I have machines, license for the machines, receipts for everything in there, computers. I'm being slanted all over town.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, and a few other things. But that's the other side. Many years ago, I saw my parents die of cancer. I held my son as he died of cancer about a year and a half ago. I don't want to see other people have to go through what I've gone through, what Mr. Rosendahl has gone through, which other people are going through right now. So how can I help? Can we get the Personnel Committee and maybe the majority of this council to recommend to the Personnel Department to provide for all employees of the City of Los Angeles, both general fund and proprietary, an opportunity and encouragement to register as bone marrow donors with the assistance perhaps of the various medical providers to the city employees so that we can have a decent bone marrow registry for all of the City of Los Angeles and maybe for the whole county and maybe even for the whole nation? Because we represent a very different cut from many other places. Maybe New York City has as much diversity, but 26 languages here? Can we get 26 different communities to just get all of the eligibles to register their bone marrow? And by the way, technology is changing so much that I think if we had that database, there would be a lot of private companies that would want it and that could use it as part of their research to maybe not cure it, but at least make it less burdensome for the people that have to endure it.
Doctor, I won't call him Dr. Arnold Sachs, but yeah, Mr. Garcetti.
We have introduced that, Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, I know that you know about that. So it's in there. And we're looking at the city having that, that sort of a bone marrow registry for all new employees that come forward. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for that very constructive statement. And Mr. Garcetti, thank you. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. And to close the festivities of today's annual presentation awards, on Wednesday, when you had the budget discussion with Miguel Santana, I was just wondering, not that I would know how it would affect the, the funding for, that's the deficit for the city? But when did he mention the pay raise and how that would influence your upcoming budget deficits? Because I stuck around for about 10 minutes and said, you know, can't handle this BS. So just wondering, did he happen to mention during that budget discussion, the pay raise that is coming up? Because on Thursday morning, if you looked at the LA Times, it discussed that $167 million of the proposed $212 million from the sales tax would go towards salaries. The good news you should take about the sales tax proposal is that it gives you, and you should pay attention, an idea of what the city gains in Measure R taxes that are in effect in the county. If this half cent sales tax goes through, it's claimed that it will raise $212 million in a year, which is precisely how much the city would get raising through Measure R sales tax. But the city doesn't actually get $212 million. It gets 15% of that, because that's 15% local return. Upcoming days, the city will discuss giving $10 million for the next 23 years for the downtown streetcars. If you have potholes for the next 23 years, you better get your requests in because you got $20 million a year left.
All right. Mr. Sachs, that completes our public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
Desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Any announcements? Mr. Buscano.
Thank you, Mr. LeBunch. For those who joined us late, Channel 35 tonight, we're going to showcase the power broker at the Grand Annex in downtown San Pedro tonight, 7:00 PM. And tomorrow in Wilmington at Banning High School, we're going to have the Parents' Center opening at 1527 Lackme Avenue in Wilmington at Banning High School. We're going to kick it off at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership there. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just wanted to invite all the viewers and my colleagues to the parade in Chinatown. It's the Year of the Snake and we have a lot of people attend and enjoy our restaurant. So hopefully you all can make it. And it's a grand event.
And that's right on Broadway?
Right on Broadway.
Right on Broadway.
Makes the loop on Hill.
And we congratulate you, Mr. Reyes, again for being grand marshal, all the work you've done in that area. Good job, grand marshal. Mr. Garcetti. Thank you. I just have, I'm going to be there on the parade. It's one of the great parades. You see a lot of people from our districts, Mr. Garcetti, as well as other parts of the city, which is fun. But I also want to remember, everybody, it's a great weekend to take a hike, whether it's in the Kedathan State Park or Baldwin Hills, State Park, Santa Monica Mountains, anywhere. It's a beautiful weekend coming up. And it's also President's Weekend. And take time to learn about our presidents. There's several new books out on a variety of presidents. It's good to learn about our nation's history. Mr. Reyes.
The parade begins at noon time on Broadway and Hill, so we all invited.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. All right, would you all please rise for adjourning motions? Sergeants, all please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked that we adjourn today in memory of Amado Mayonila Amit, who was 84 years old, passed away just on January 26, 2013, in his home in Los Angeles. He was born September 13, 1928, in Jolo Sulu, Philippines, the son of Marcelo Anasuncion Mayonila Amit. He is one of six children. And he fell in love and married Presentacion Ihara Lucero Amit on October 4, 1953. This year would have been their 60th anniversary. They left the Philippines in June 1969 in pursuit of a better future for opportunities for their children. He is survived by his wife, Presentacion Ihara Lucera Amit. Three children, Lemuel, aka Lem, Emmanuel, aka Em, and Manny, and Maria, aka Lucci. Nine grandchildren and eight great grandchildren. May Amado Mayonila Amit rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Seferino Rocha Saavedra. He passed away peacefully on February 8, 2013, after 99 and a half years of life. He lived a long and fruitful life surrounded by family and friends. And he has an interesting story in that back in 1928, when this building first opened, he was one of the youngsters who had a great time running up and down the stairs on opening day. So he has that memory and he shared it with his family and friends as a life long Angelino. He is survived by his seven children, 26 grandchildren, 30 great grandchildren, and one great, great grandchild. Bert Saavedra is one of his daughters, who's been a strong activist for the Pico Union Westlake area and throughout the LA County area in her fight against liquor licenses. So it's obvious his profound impression of his family has been great and developed great leaders in our community. So he will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Seeing no other adjourning motions? Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, Tuesday, we will have the attorney motion for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Deputy who passed away.
Thank you very much.
On Tuesday.
So as we go forward, let's remember all those who've gone before us and have a good weekend. Remember our presidents. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.